And the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. I am Texas society. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
The invocation is going to be delivered by Mr. John Blau of City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me with an opening prayer. Father in heaven, praise you for this day that you've given us and praise you for the blessings that you continue to shower us with daily. We know from your word that all good and perfect gifts come from you. Father, I thank you for the city council, the positions that you've put them in to make decisions for the city. I ask for your wisdom and knowledge to be given to them tonight, because we know that the decisions that they make will affect all the people in Shenandoah and surrounding people as well. Father, lift up the police department, the police officers that work daily to keep the city safe. I ask for protection for them. And finally, Father, lift up the city staff as for wisdom and protection for them as well as they come to work every day to make this a better place. Bring us back safely to the next council meeting in April. I pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I'm going to move on to our citizens forum. Citizens invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address the council and give their names before sharing their comments. Our first speaker is Minister Tyrone Price. Mr. Price.
Good evening, everyone. As you stated, my name is Minister Tyrone Price. Definitely good to see you and all of you today. First, I want to start by thanking the leadership, staff, and Blau for a meeting with the Tamina Community leaders this past week. We've conveyed our requests to the city and are grateful for the conversation. So definitely, we know that that was a great start, initial point. We've got a lot of great work to do, and I'm sure that we'll get it done. We want to hold future conversations. I know that there's going to be more meetings to come, but we also want to hold open public forums in the form of workshops and form of town halls as it relates to meetings and P&amp;Z, comprehensive plans and things of that nature as well, and to provide mechanics for valuable input for both Shenandoah and Tamina community representatives and residents as well. As stated, we have a petition, and we've announced it. It will be available on change.org. We're committed to working with you and want to hear from the communicate, from the communities in the appropriate forums. We are firm in keeping Tamina historic and keeping Tamina Tamina. So I think that working together, we will be able to do that. I think it's just, you know, you, building a united front between both Tamina community, the historic Tamina, and we understand the legislature that's being placed that can help Tamina became, remain historic without having inter, interrelated gentrifications or anything like that just as well. So great to work with Shenandoah, know that we can get it done. It's just a matter of time of just putting our boots on the ground, which I wore my boots tonight to do it. And so definitely want to applaud you for the efforts that you're going to do and that we're going to do together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, next speaker is Charlie Ballmer.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, team from Shenandoah. Charlie Ballmer, 214 Hickory Ridge in Shenandoah Valley. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight to express the gratitude I have to those that are up here as well as the folks in that work with the city with the communication that's happening. I know it's never going to be perfect. There's, you know, different people look at different communication mediums for their information, so it is hard to hit every one of those all the time. But I do think that Shenandoah does a fantastic job of doing from the city, from the posts that Debbie does on the different Facebook forums, the things that we have on the website, things like tonight, it was great to hear that feedback that the communication's really going with the Tamina side of the House. That was something I heard, you know, in council a couple of weeks back. So it's really encouraging to see that when there's things that are brought up that it makes sense, and we have a very responsive city and city council. And just to add to, I just, because I got this today, Courtney, this, this is just another example of something that we do that's really nice. It's not a, you know, it's not a daily or weekly thing per se, but it has a ton of great information in there that, that goes out, I'm assuming, to every one of the addresses within the Shenandoah boundaries. And it's a, it's just a nice little addition. So when I got this in the mailbox today, brought an extra smile on my face coming before the council meeting tonight. That was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. The next speaker is Jana Houston.
Jana Houston, I live in the valley. And Bill and Jackie, I just, where's Jackie? Is she here tonight? Anyway, just wanted to tell them thank you. And Commissioner chair for P&amp;Z last night had a great P&amp;Z meeting, lots of great conversation. Jim, we missed you, but we know you'll be there next time. But had a really nice P&amp;Z meeting last night, so I wanted to thank them for that. Also, I just wanted to let you know that last time we talked and I kind of only have three minutes, so it seemed like I was delivering the good news and the bad news, and I gave you the bad news first, but tonight's the good news if I could. So we talked a little bit about Tuskegee, and we talked about history, and that's what I teach my students, as I said last time. But I want to give kind of the good news about Tuskegee because one of my very favorite characters in history is Booker T. Washington. And he was the first principal and the person who really established the Tuskegee Normal and Industrial School, which then became the Tuskegee Institute. And the cool thing about Mr. Washington was he was born a slave in 1856. He actually went to seminary, at pastor, so he went to seminary, and he studied there, and then he began the principal at Tuskegee. And one of the things that he did was he was a great fundraiser, and because he knew that he needed to have buildings to teach his students, and so he worked with people in the community, he, and it didn't matter their race. Now, Andrew Carnegie may be a little bit of a fiend, a little bit of a friend in history, depending on how you look at him, but Mr. Washington actually went and worked with all, all races in his community. And sometimes he was placed under criticism. He and Mr. Dubois would have debates in public about it. But what I want to say tonight is thank you for those of you, because we, there was a conversation last night at P&amp;Z, and I wanted to say thank you so much for any conversations that you guys are having with the Tamina community. And I also wanted to say, I'm going to turn around this way, guys. So Pastor, I wanted to say that I am so encouraged by any of these conversations that the Tamina community is happening with our leaders. John, congratulations on the contract, but I, the reason I say congratulations is I know you're going to do a good job, and it's going to be a good job for the community of Tamina. So thank you so much in advance for any of these communications that are going to be really, it's, it's going to be good for the county, and it's going to be good for the city, and it's going to be good for Tamina. I'll just leave it this, this way. Did you know that, that the city or the community of Tamina was established in 1871? That's 10 years before the establishment of the Tuskegee Institute. So they were here 10 years before Booker T. Washington actually started Tuskegee. They're fifty years, and I thank you for recognizing that history. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jana. All right. Before we move on to item number six, I want to take a couple of moments here to make an announcement. I don't know how many of you knew Mr. JR Moore. He was here, he was here before, way before I was, actually. But Mr. Moore was a former mayor of Shenandoah, and those who I've spoken to who knew Mr. Moore expressed that he, he just loved Shenandoah, and he spent his whole life here. He was also the Montgomery County tax collector, and he was involved in Montgomery County affairs almost all of his life. He passed away on March the eighth, and there will be service, services will be held for Mr. Moore Friday, March 24th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. over at Forest Park, Woodland Funeral Home. So if those of you who want to pay homage to Mr. Moore, welcome to attend the services there. So that was item number one. Item number two, this month is International Women's Day, and I wanted to acknowledge all those women who work under this roof here in Shenandoah City Hall. They, we cannot function without, without you, and we appreciate you all, specifically their leader, Kathy Rye.
Thank you.
I want to acknowledge you as, as the competent leader, the more than competent leader that gets us through the day here. So I want to thank you all.
Thank you for that.
All right. Now we're going to move on to item number six, which is the presentation of the monthly MDD report. Turn the roll, please.
Well, just to recap, there was no, no MDD meeting this month, but at the last meeting, we elected Byron Beavers president, myself as vice president, and Joanna Gonzalez as secretary, and we also approved an update to the capital improvement plan. Just a couple updates on projects. We have the wastewater treatment plant. We're still waiting for approval from the Texas Water Board, and so we're kind of targeting May for probably beginning billing, not billing, bidding. And we also had some progress on, right away with King Fuels. So that's happening there, right over there at I-45 and Research. So those really were the major updates for the month. Scout says the Vision Park Pond is going along marvelously. Scout's my dog. All right. Thanks. Questions, anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
All right. Item number seven, presentation of the 2022 annual financial report.
My name's Lewis Breelove with Brooks Watson, and I would have the pleasure of working as senior audit manager for City of Shenandoah's 2022 fiscal year audit. In your packet and also printed out in front of you, you have a bound copy of the audit report, and in front of that, inside that front cover are a couple other items there. A printout of the presentation that'll be on the screen, as well as the two other letters that go with the report. So I'll be using this presentation to go over the, the results of the audit. First, what I always like to do is just give council a brief overview of the audit process, so you have a little bit of a feel for what are some of the things that we're doing during that audit process. So first, the audit is performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And when we perform the audit, we break it down into five phases. That first phase being the assessment phase. So we come out during the middle of the year, and we perform walkthroughs through various departments within the city. Pretty much anywhere where money's coming in or going out, we're evaluating what type of controls are in place, what the procedures are, what risks may be there, and what type of controls are putting in place to mitigate against those risks. And then we also sample test items over each of those areas to ensure that what we're seeing written down in terms of the processes and what we've been walked through, we're actually seeing in practice on the transactions that have occurred throughout that year. Then based on that, we may provide some guidance or recommendations on ways for efficiencies or other improvements. Then we move into the risk-based approach, and so what that is, is each aspect of the financial statements has a different level of risk or type of risk, which drives and dictates the type of procedures we're doing throughout the audit. So we evaluate each aspect of the financial statements and then put together the plan that dictates what type of control testing we're going to do, what type of detail testing we're going to do, to what level, to ensure that we feel comfortable about the material accuracy of the financial statements when the audit's complete. Next is the compliance testing, so that's going to be making sure that the city is in compliance with all things such as grants, bid requirements. We review all council meeting minutes and look for anything that you all may have adopted or approved during the year that may require some compliance, and we ensure that the city is in compliance with those items. Next is field work, so that's after year end. Once the city's gotten the books ready for the completion of that year, we come out and we start to test that, that financial activity. We tie out the balance sheet, confirm with third party wherever possible, perform cutoff testing to ensure everything's in the proper year, as well as test the material accuracies of your revenues and your expenses for each of the funds. Once we've done that, we move into our conclusion and reporting phase. So that's going to be multiple layers of review to ensure all audit procedures performed were complete and appropriate, and then preparing the report and the letters that come with it that we have for you this evening. All right. Next, just going over some of the components within the audit reports you have there. So within the report, there's the auditor's opinion. That's going to be our letter regarding our opinion over the financials. Behind that's your management's discussion and analysis, so that's going to be year-to-year comparison, information containing concerning the budget and different changes that occurred throughout the year. And then behind that's going to be your actual financial statements. That's going to include your government-wide full accrual statements as well as your fund level statements, and behind that's your notes to the financial statements, which is going to give you detail pertaining to those financial statements, help you get a little bit of a more detailed feel of what's included in those numbers. Behind that's your, your required supplementary information, such as your budget to actual for your general fund, and then behind that's your other supplementary information. Concerning that first item, the auditor's opinion letter, there are four possible opinion types that we as auditors are able to provide. There's unmodified, qualified, disclaimed, and adverse, and the city did receive an unmodified opinion, often referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. So excellent job and great work from the city, and everything looked good. Next, a few financial highlights for you. This year-over-year comparison over the governmental funds. So the general fund, we saw an increase there in fund balance at just over 10 million. That increase primarily due to sales tax and permit revenues being higher than anticipated and conservatively, that was conservatively budgeted for during the year. Debt service consistently pretty much not changed from year-over-year. Metro park improvement funds, that we saw a change, decreased a little over 2 million, and that's primarily due to Gatsby 84. There is a, a lot of the fiduciary aspects of the Pid has now been transitioned out into fiduciary statements. So within the report, if you were to compare this year's report to last year's report, you would see in this year's report, there's now a fiduciary statements component within the report, pulling out all the activity that the city is making sure is being handled appropriately, but is not the city's responsibility, such as the bonds that are pertaining to those, to that Pid. So that was the biggest reason for that change. Capital improvements, we saw increase there. That's what was in line with the expectations for the year. Hotel occupancy was up 816,000, combination of lower anticipated, lower-than-anticipated expenditures for that fund, and also the first full year of one of the hotels being online and just overall increased visitation to the city in 2022. And then the other non-major funds, it's going to be a combination of all the other restricted special revenue funds, and those are in line with expectation and are being consistently used based on those restrictions. All right. Next is a general fund balance, just get a little deeper dive on that general fund. So the city's, does have a policy that the general fund would maintain a minimum unrestricted budgetary fund balance of no less than 180 days or 50% of the general fund's expenditures. And that, this year for 2022 fiscal year, it was at 105%. And so why this is an important metric, and it really drives, show that the city's financial responsibility, stability, credit, creditworthiness, and also the fiscal responsibility, but that number gives you an idea of, from an unrestricted cash basis, if expenditures were consistent from 2022 into 2023, relatively consistent, how far would you be able to operate in that next year without having to worry about the, any more cash coming in the door? So the, the goal would be at least half the year, and the city's currently at a full year, 105%. So, so that's a, in good shape. That 2022 budgeted results, there was a net positive budget variance of 981,000. I gave you a summary breakdown there for revenues, had a positive budget variance of 967,000, so more revenues received than anticipated or budgeted for. Expenditures just over, or had a negative variance of 68,000. That's primarily due to one line item, which would be the fire contract that was entered into in 2022. It was budgeted for an estimate that was a little lower than, than, but it actually ended up being, but all other departments were, were under budget. So the rest, so the rest of the fund looked good. Other sources and uses had a positive variance of 82,000, so giving you a total net positive budget variance of 981,000. So assuming the city was able to accomplish everything we were seeking to accomplish for the year, that's the sign of a very healthy, good budget. All right. Next, a quick look at the proprietary funds. So that's going to be your water sewer fund. Water sewer funds do operate more like a business and not like, like the governmental funds that are operating to not make a profit but to, to run the city. For water sewer fund, we want to make sure that it is self-sustaining. And so the, there is a net operating income of 1.4 million, so it is self-sustaining. And also, I wanted to point out, and I added a note, that this was the first year in a while where the water sewer fund had a positive unrestricted portion of your net position. So some of the changes that you all made this past year, we're seeing the, that work and all the efforts put in, driving that fund to a, a more positive position. And so that looked really good. So now the unrestricted portion is no longer a deficit of 79,000, which was what it was last year, but a positive 356,000. All right. Next, communication letter. So this is regarding the other two letters that came with the report, the first being the communication with those in, in charge with governance. This letter covers a few things. It's going to have a couple of the audit adjustments that we had included in the report, but also going to go over our responsibility as auditors, management's responsibility that pertains to the audit, and just go over other, a few of the key factors, and a couple of things I like to always point out from that letter. One being, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements. Two, there were no difficulties encountered when working with management. And then three, the audit adjustments that were identified have been corrected by management. The second letter would be communication regarding internal controls. So that would be any recommendations that we have based on things that we saw. There were no material weaknesses identified, but we did make a couple of recommendations as we're always trying to make sure that the city is doing everything they can, and we're always trying to help find efficiencies in ways that things can improve. All right. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
No, I just had noted that on page 23, you'd mentioned that our net position went up $3.4 million, so that was, that was good to see. And not only is the, the water fund self-sufficient at this point through policy changes that we made, but I was also really pleasantly happy to see the $238,000 from impact fees. So we had to implement those a couple of years ago, let them lay fallow for one year due to law, and now we're finally seeing, you know, things come out of that. So I'm really happy to see that. So council's done some things to, you know, help get extra revenue for the city. Oh, and the way that the, the pit has been broken out will prevent folks from getting confused on what the debt really is. So that's developer debt, that's not city debt.
That's right.
City debt is, ad valorem debt is down to less than $12 million now, so I think that's a really great thing for us. When I started, it must have been like 30 million. So we've been knocking that off really well.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I do also want to just thank Lisa and their team. They work really hard. They pull everything for us, so we pass for them quite a bit for support and questions, and sometimes it's in the middle of budget stuff, too, and so, but they work really hard and do a great job, so I just want to really appreciate it.
No, it's always fun to work with you, Louis, and Lisa does a great job. And it's like, sometimes you make me wish that I had stayed with accounting instead of going with IT, but it's probably better off that way.
Well, thank you. My contact information is there, so if you think of any questions after this meeting, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item eight, discussion and possible action to adopt the 2022 annual financial report.
Mayor, I just wanted to, before we take the vote, I just wanted to recognize that this process involves a lot of people within the city, a lot of people that the public might not know actually contribute to make this successful, our financial procedures and policies. And it starts, it starts from cashiering, you know, up front with Jennifer and Abby with building permits, calculating building permit fees, collecting the money. Then it trickles down to our AP admins, which are Leslie Stevens and Cara Castanon. That's overseen by my AP clerk, Lacy Davis, who also does payroll. And then in utility billing, we have Tammy Daly, who the auditors have said she's probably one of the most detailed utility billing departments that they've ever seen. Even Ms. Diana up front helps us with asset management, that helps us with depreciation schedules and file retention with our invoices. It trickles up to our department heads, especially Chris. He's been helping us with getting everything paperless with our AP process and trying to get more digital, and that's been great. And then also Courtney, she keeps track of all the legal notices, which are compliance-based, and we have to make sure that those are done correctly and bids are done correctly, and and then trickles down to raw that, you know, manages contracts and make sure we're all in compliance with that, with Bill's help and Joseph's help. And then Ms. Debbie helps out with the civic club, keeps their budget in line, makes sure that they're appropriately purchasing correctly, because they are volunteers and they're not city employees, so they do make purchases on behalf of the city, and she makes sure that they stay in compliance. And then, you know, and then my directors, Joseph, Troy, Jackie, and John, they have the biggest departments, too, in our city, and they do a great job at finding cost savings and keeping sure that everything is done correctly and ethically, and we're spending smartly. And then also, you know, and then it, we're all successful because of Kathy. Kathy gives us the, the freedom, and also she trusts us to make sure that we're all making the appropriate purchasing and compliance decisions to keep our, our city sustainable and also in a healthy financial situation. So really, I couldn't not be successful without, without everyone. And I just wanted, a lot of times people are not, you know, seen, you know, but everyone has a part in this, and I just wanted to put that out there. It's a great team we have, and I just wanted to give everyone recognition for a great audit this year. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
No, you're good.
What, not a word about the audit committee putting in all their hard work?
Audit committee's wonderful. We, we met last Thursday, lots of laughs, and Charlie and Ron have really taken this and understand the audit, and it helps me out in case there's questions from other council members. They have a good grasp as well. You know, so it's another level of security to make sure that all checks and balances are being followed, and I just want to thank you all, and council also, for giving us the guidance to keep being prosperous and being ethical in our spending, so.
Thanks, Lisa.
No problem.
Thank you, Lisa. Very important for the public to hear that, that it's great news that we are operating on a very, very sound basis here.
I think I forgot one person, Cara Castanon in Police Department. She keeps all those guys in line, so I want to put that out there as well.
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the 2022 annual financial report.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the annual report by Councilman Brat. The second is by Councilman Ray Makeup. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. Ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, suspending the rates proposed by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation during business as Centerpoint Energy, N-Tex, and Centerpoint Energy, Texas Gas. Company gas reliability infrastructure program, filing, filing made with the city on March 2nd, 2023, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel, this is the annual GRIP rate adjustment filing, and the ordinance allows council to accept or suspend or reject the adjustment. And what you have in front of you will suspend the adjustment for 45 days.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and possible action to adopt the minutes of the February 22nd, 2023 regular meeting. Motion?
I think a motion may be approved as read.
Second.
There are a motion to approve by Councilman Brott, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for February 2023. Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the accounts payable.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Civic Club updates, Mr. Ballmer.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. So we've got quite a few updates. We've got a lot of stuff going on with Civic Club, things that are specifically us, some that are associated with the city as a whole. So I'll just kind of run through those, make sure everybody's very familiar with what's going on. So first and foremost is we have Trash Bash coming up this Saturday. That's from 8:00 to noon. We've got folks that'll be working that. In addition to that, our Neighbors Helping Neighbors program is already got folks that have submitted to get assistance carrying some of their bigger stuff up here. So I will be, I posted that on Facebook as well, so anybody that does have a need, that's either maybe physically challenged or just has a bigger item that needs to be brought up, I'll be grabbing, getting those things on both Friday and Saturday and bringing them up to assist our Shenandoah residents. That, if there's anybody else who would like to help, I don't, I think I've got it under control at this point, but if there are any volunteers, I do know I have one big TV that I've got to bring up. But anyways, it wasn't the water heater that still had water in it from the last Trash Bash, that was a big challenging one. But anyways, we'll be doing that on the Saturday from 8:00 to noon. Debbie's posted on the main site, but of course, you know, you've got to be a Shenandoah resident, there are some limitations to the things that can be brought, but check the Facebook page or the Shenandoah City website for more information on that. The next big thing, and I almost wore Easter bunny ears up just for this item, it's one of our biggest events of the year, and that's our Easter egg hunt is the following Saturday on April the 1st. So that's from 10:00 to noon in the main park here in Shenandoah. There's, I think, 8,000 eggs that will be out there for the kids to find. We do do the actual hunt pretty early in the event, pretty much just a few minutes right after. So for those of you that will be attending with kids to do the actual hunt, please make sure that you show up early because if you show up at 10:30 or 11 o'clock, it's going to be hard to find any eggs in the field because they will all been ramped through. But that's a great event for us to be in, and the kids would really, really love that. The next item is, we're actually just helping the Shenandoah Police Department, who's very favorably represented in the Montgomery County Safety Expo, which is that following weekend on April the 8th. That event is from 11:00 to 2:00. We'll be serving food on behalf of the Shenandoah City Police, so please come out and visit. That is, I didn't get to do it last year, but my understanding is absolutely amazing. And for some of the meetings that I've been in with that, the different organizations that'll be represented there will just be a fantastic experience. Next thing, another very important part of our springtime is the scholarship program for Shenandoah High School seniors this year. That program is open. We've added an online element to it this year. You can get that link off the Shenandoah City website, so you can submit completely online if you choose to do that. There's also a form that they can fill out to submit that. The deadline is coming up, so we want to make sure that folks get their entries submitted so that we have that to be able to be presented in the very near future. And we do it relatively early so that the kids that do receive the scholarships, that they can, that can be part of their kind of notations of their graduation, part of that. So one, it's kind of a two-part other thing. So the Neighbors Helping Neighbors, I just want to add one other thing. So as we get into April, there's, I don't know, I think like six or seven different days, like day of, you know, parks or day of being outdoors. So as part of that, I wanted to maybe lend a hand to the kids and families that have bikes or wagons that may have been sitting in the garage this winter time, to just kind of give them the once-over. So what I'm going to do is on April the 22nd is my tentative date, I'm going to be up at the park. I'll have tools, different like things to oil their chains, just so that they've got an opportunity, you know, air compressors to make sure that their bikes are nice and safe as they go through that. I am going to reach out to Bike Land across the way here to see if they can participate with that. Hopefully, they've got an interest in supporting the Shenandoah community with that. And then I will also say, this is a big teaser, we're going to do the flag piece again come May, so we'll be, anybody that hasn't worn a flag, I'll be going around and replacing those in the May timeframe. And finally, just a final reminder to everybody that our meetings are the second Tuesdays. We would love to have more people in, just to be able to get different, you know, lines of thought. We've got so many different activities, the different inputs from residents that want to help participate, help volunteer. You don't have to, you know, be at every meeting. You don't have to come to an event and be there from the very beginning to the end. You have to come, do an hour, half hour even. We put a lot of effort into these, and the more people that can assist with that, the better. Any questions for me?
So do you have a whole bunch of volunteers in your back pocket?
There's a few that are out there. There's not a ton. For things like this weekend, it should be, like I said, we should be in good shape. The person that has the TV, they've at least got somebody that I think will be able to help me. If not, I'll reach out to find somebody else, you know, maybe grab Big Jake or something. Come help me load it in the back of the truck. But we do have some folks that have volunteered either, you know, with adding an extra vehicle, which I think we're fine with. But the other activities, like the Easter egg hunt, you know, there's so many kids. That's one of our biggest events, you know. After lighting of the angels, to me, that's the largest population of folks that come in, and it's predominantly all those, you know, younger kids. And if you've not seen it, it's like, you know, the running of the bulls. It's like when it'll be you this year, you know, making that announcement of, you know, for them to go. It's just, there's a lot of craziness that's there. But it's controlled and good craziness so that, you know, anybody that we have, anybody that wants to volunteer, even just for that, to come out for that first half hour and help make sure everything goes smoothly and that the kids are getting their eggs, you know, those kind of things are just very helpful.
What about assembling the eggs ahead of time on the week before? Don't they, don't you have a full week to where people are invited to come down to City Hall and assemble eggs together?
Yeah, so.
Put stuff in them?
Yep. So this year, we're doing it a little bit different. Do you want to say something about that? Because there are, like I said, I think there's like 8,000 eggs. There's a lot of them.
We're doing it the same way we did last year. We've gone away from the stuffed, cheap little eggs with candies that the kids picked up. All of the eggs that go into the hunt are empty. The children then bring their eggs up and they exchange it for a basket from the city. So we had 8,000 plastic eggs from last year, but staff has already taken care of making sure all 8,000 are put together, so we're good there. Starting Monday morning, about 10 o'clock, we will be putting together 400 bags of goodies. So we'll be in the community room, it'll be set up, just anybody that wants to come in will be given stuff to put in them, and it'll just be done until we get them through. Last year, it took us two days to get them through. We learned a lot last year, so hopefully the first day we'll be through. And then the next activities will be on the Friday and Saturday morning. So we've gotten, each year, we get a little bit more organized and focused and learn what works and what doesn't. And with the good volunteer group that we have as a basis, we get it done.
So right now, you're starting this coming Monday at 10 o'clock in the morning.
10 o'clock in the morning.
You need volunteers to come down to help.
Anybody that wants to come for however long they want to. We'll start at 9:00 and we'll end when we end. You know, we had, last year, we had some people that we started at 9:00 and they came at 1:00 and were kind of upset that we were through. I take you when you come.
Okay. All right, good deals? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. City attorney updates.
Nothing tonight.
City administrator updates.
Counsel, I have just a couple quick ones. You have your monthly departmental reports in the agenda pack if you have any questions about any of those. Also, we're always interested in any feedback you may have. If you want to see something different in those reports, just please always let us know. And then the last item is just to let everyone know that the toddler park is now completed, and we're already seeing some use of those great new parking spots, so that's some good news for the residents. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I do have a question on your report. I saw that you have CBB specific date for meeting with hotels. Do you have that date set? And are we invited as city council members to attend?
I know that Dawn has been working with them to get a schedule set that works for all of our hotels or as many as possible. City council members attending, that would create a public meeting.
There cannot be more than two, or you're going to have an open record, an open meetings violation, so.
Can I just be one, then? I'd like to attend.
And we're happy to report back to council on the outcome of that meeting.
What is it going to be?
I'll get with you.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to item 15, council inquiry.
We had a really nice ribbon-cutting ceremony for Memorial Hermann Endocrinology. It's a beautiful facility, they've got a ton of parking. It's really a great addition for Shenandoah. And I got to meet our new CBB guy, Billy, who's not here tonight, but I'm looking forward to being able to have him be announced here. And just as well, Fielding's provided, you know, the appetizers and their meatballs are awesome, so go to Fielding's and buy dinner over there, so, awesome stuff. That's it.
Fletcher.
So I, too, just wanted to comment and thank all of our women staff who do just such a phenomenal job in not just supporting our efforts here and making us look really good, but actually all the things that they worked so hard to accomplish in the city day in and day out. We definitely could not do it without you guys. Each of you play such a vital role in our community, in our city, for our residents, for our businesses. The pure attitude of just willingly going above and beyond each and every day, there's not enough gratitude that we can give you. You know, I was looking back here over the last six years that I've had the pleasure of serving and was kind of awestruck, and I think I sent Kathy a message about all the things that she has accomplished in her leadership here in the city. It's just phenomenal. Teddy Roosevelt had a quote that talked about the one in the arena, and it says this, it says, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The critic belongs to the man, in this case, the woman, who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if she fails, at least fails while daring greatly." So that is the place, so that, her place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who never knew or know victory nor defeat. So again, I just want to say thank you, Kathy, for your amazing leadership.
Thank you.
Over the last several years, to lead our city the way that you have, to accomplish so many incredible things. And I'm grateful that I, and I know the rest of the council is grateful as well for being a part of that. So thank you for all your hard work and that of the staff. It's you setting that leadership that truly allows them to discover themselves as well and triumph through the day as the day progresses. So again, thanks for everything that all the women on our staff do day in and day out. I also want to comment, last week, we had an example that was used on the Tuskegee Experiment. And I have to say that I was appalled, upset, I was embarrassed for some of our guests that were here to compare such a horrific thing that happened to the lack of providing information, in their opinion, by this council. And to compare us to that same act of taking a life in such a racial and prejudicial way. I don't even know how to comment further beyond that, other than to, again, apologize to our guests that were here and heard what was said. I don't have anything else to add to that, Mayor.
Kind of hard to top that. I was extremely offended, so I agree with you 100%. I was embarrassed for our city, I was embarrassed for the guests that we had here. I felt embarrassed, and there's nothing more I could say about it.
Got nothing more to add to that?
Yeah, I'm good tonight.
All right, we're going to move on to executive session. According to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, under item 551072487, we're going to break now, the time is 7:49. And we're going to go into executive session. And we're going to go into Executive Session.